All right, good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for being patient and allowing us to do our quick change out and get everything back on track. This morning, unfortunately, our chairman is unavoidably detained with some family issues and could not make it. So I get to share the holiday cheer in spirit with you this morning on our final meeting of the year. So I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for December 17th. And with that, I would ask that Mr. Dagny Stapleton, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, ma'am?
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Director. I appreciate that. All right, Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Von Hartung, our chairman, is absent. Bob Lucy, vice chair.
Here.
Marcia Brinkbrigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County manager Eric Brown. Deputy District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, county clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Mr. Manager, we're on item three.
Three is an appearance by the folks from NACO. So we have Dagny Stapleton, who's the executive director of the Nevada NACO, and Vincent Guthro? Guthro? Guthro, thank you, who's the deputy director for Nevada NACO.
Welcome, Miss Stapleton.
Thank you for having us today again. I'm Dagny Stapleton. I'm the executive director of NACO, the Nevada Association of Counties. We are the statewide organization whose members are all 17 of Nevada's counties, and I want to thank Washoe County for your membership and in support of NACO. Next slide, please. Thank you. Hi, Nancy.
I think there's a change, Miss Stapleton.
Okay, got it. Oh, there is?
It should be right there next to you.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Sorry. This is our -- these are our current officers. Our 2019 NACO president is Lander County Commissioner Pat Waits. She will be succeeded next month by Humboldt County Commissioner Jim French. And we are excited that the NACO membership voted in September to elect Commissioner Bob Lucy as NACO vice president, so Commissioner Lucy will be NACO president in 2022. Our board of directors is made up of at least one commissioner from each of Nevada's 17 counties. Washoe County has two representatives on our board, so in addition to Commissioner Lucy, also Chair Hartung is your representative on our board. This is our mission. NACO was created in 1924 and is enabled in Nevada law statutes, Chapter 244. We support cooperation and coordination amongst Nevada's counties. Counties, small and large, all have a lot of similar issues at the state, local, and federal level. And regardless of your makeup, our staff of four works hard to be nimble and provide resources to support counties. And our deputy director, as was already mentioned, Vincent Guthro, is here with me today. Vince does a great job for NACO as well. So I'd like to go over some of the ways that NACO provides support to counties and to give you an update of some of the things that we have been doing over the past year or two. Our board meets once a month and functions as a forum for collaboration amongst the counties. At our most recent meetings, for example, our members discussed an update on opioid litigation, had a discussion with you on our president Mark Johnson about funding for the Cooperative Extension Program, and the board approved an actuarial study of county Medicaid match assessment costs. NACO also provides educational workshops throughout the year. Earlier this month, NACO hosted a workshop that gave a detailed overview by bill of counties -- of changes counties need to make as a result of legislation passed in the 2019 legislative session. NACO would like to thank your assistant district attorney, Paul Liborelli. He was a presenter on that panel for us. Additional workshop topics approved by the NACO board for next year include how Nevada's open meeting and public records laws work, including recent changes, oversight of public defenders in Nevada, how the new state office of indigent defense services will work, and then just prior to the 2021 session, how a bill becomes a law in Nevada. This is a guide on how to be an effective advocate for both commissioners and staff at the upcoming legislative session. Video recordings of the workshops are available on our website, so the one that we just had, as well as past workshops, are all up on our website. Our website is a valuable source of information. We have various publications relating to county government, as well as information about our meetings and upcoming events, and news relevant to counties. And then finally, we provide advocacy for counties. Our annual conference is another way that we provide opportunities for our members to interact, where we provide information and education. Our 2019 conference took place at the end of September and was hosted by you, Washoe County. We want to again sincerely thank Washoe County for your support of NACO and for sponsoring the conference. Specifically, your chair, Commissioner Hartung, and your staff really did a lot of work to help us make that conference a success, so again, we thank you for that. It was -- the event was at the Sparks Nugget, and we had representatives of 16 of -- out of Nevada's 17 counties attending, and we had a number of educational sessions and panels on political updates, federal and state political updates, county fiscal issues, cybersecurity, and all of the PowerPoints and information from our conference is up on the NACO website as well. Finally, the board has approved Churchill County as the host of the 2020 NACO conference, which will be in Fallon the week of November 16, 2020. So one of the most important ways, as I mentioned, that we provide services to counties is to advocate for counties at the Nevada Legislature. We are there most every day during the session, tracking the many bills that affect counties. About half the bills end up impacting counties. When we are at the legislature, we work closely with each of our members, including commissioners and county staff, to work on the many issues or bills that affect all of Nevada's counties. Also, leading up to the legislative session, we work to develop and maintain relationships with legislators to provide them information on county priorities, as well as information and education on what counties do and all the services that counties provide. Interim activities of NACO include following regulatory hearings, as well as interim legislative committees, of which there are many. This interim, we're watching for regulations on the bills that were enacted in 2019, as well as on discussions, including indigent defense and changes affecting public works. Last session, a bill was passed to reform Nevada's indigent defense system by providing state oversight for county public defenders. We worked on this issue in the last interim and throughout the last session to help ensure that counties will be well represented in this new structure, and so that this does not become an additional unfunded mandate on counties. So we are continuing during this interim to work closely with that board, which has already been appointed, and they will oversee reforms. So we'll track their work going forward, and Washoe County does have a representative on that board. One of the other statewide issues that we work on that affects all counties is the Cooperative Extension Program. NACO's position regarding cooperative extension is to ensure that counties have an adequate voice in extension programming, and of course, in regards to cooperative extension funding and the county funds that are expended for extension programs. I believe Washoe County dedicates one penny of property tax to extension, as well as additional funds for extension staff. So most recently, we have been working with you and our administration to articulate support and content for the state budget enhancement that'll go forward to the next session for cooperative extension. NACO also makes appointments to a number of statewide committees. Some of those are created by state law. And then regarding federal issues, NACO keeps in regular contact with staff from Nevada's congressional delegation. We also travel to DC each year to talk to the delegation. We do this generally as part of the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference. In 2019, when we went back to DC, we discussed issues including Medicaid funding, grants used in county jails, and for behavioral health programs, pill funding, and various public lands issues, as well as transportation issues. And we appreciate the attendance of Washoe County commissioners and staff at those meetings over the years in Washington DC with us. This year's trip will take place the end of February, so we're looking forward to that. Finally, at NACO, approximately four years ago, we hired a staff person dedicated to natural resources and public lands issues. NACO has been an ongoing stakeholder regarding the greater sage grouse land use plans. Washoe County was engaged on that as well. So the NACO board has a public land subcommittee that works in more detail on public lands and natural resources issues. That subcommittee is open to any commissioner who's interested, and we want to thank Commissioner Herman for her participation and engagement on those issues. Just a brief update on NACO activities during this past legislative session. Vincent, myself, were there pretty much every day monitoring legislation that impacted local government and working with members of your board and your staff. We worked hard on a number of fronts this session. We met regularly with legislative leadership, as well as the governor's office, on our NACO bills, as well as a handful of high priority issues that affected counties. In the end, we think our hard work paid off this session. We found compromise on some of the important issues we were concerned about. And of the six bills that NACO put forward, five of those were passed and signed by the governor, so in that respect, a successful session. One important thing we rely on during the legislative session is NACO's legislative subcommittee. That committee meets once a week during session to provide us with information and feedback on bills as they come up, and want to thank Commissioner Lucy for chairing that subcommittee this past session and for all of his engagement and leadership this past year. Just wanted to highlight two of NACO's bills that were passed that Washoe County had an interest in. SB 12 was a NACO bill that had to do with your 911 surcharge, and we actually submitted this based on some interest and conversations on this issue from Washoe County. This bill enables funds from your 911 surcharge to be used for audits, to ensure that all the fees due to you, that you use to fund your 911 system, are being collected from providers. And then SB 13 was another NACO bill. This -- the idea for this bill was brought to us by Clark County following the events of the One October tragedy. Clark County found that there was a need for county authority to create a nonprofit to be able to receive all the donations for victims that were streaming in from the community and even from around the country. When we discussed this with our board, we realized that other counties had similar concerns about being able to deal with donations and ensure that they were being distributed to victims fairly during emergencies. So pursuant to this bill, counties are now -- counties now have the authority to create a nonprofit in times of emergency. Finally, something we also pay close attention to during session is the state budget process, including all the assessments that come to counties. The big one, of course, is your Medicaid match assessments. There was a last-minute increase to those, and I know your staff was involved. NACO was involved in discussions on that as well, and that these did have an impact on NACO. Something else that NACO is doing in this area, especially in light of the increases last session, with the support of your Human Services Division, is we're working with a consultant to conduct an actuarial study of these costs, basically to get a projection of what your assessments might be going forward, and to be better informed on negotiations for those. Briefly, the National Association of Counties, a couple things. You're a member. Every county in Nevada is a member. We want to thank you for that. They have a strong lobby on Capitol Hill. They are governed by a national committee. There are two representatives on that committee or board from Nevada. These are your representatives. There are also national policy steering committees on policy areas that affect counties, federal policy areas. There's a handful of those, and we're proud that Commissioner Lucy was appointed this year to be vice chair of the Transportation Steering Committee's Subcommittee on Transit and Rail. So congratulations on that. Commissioner Hartung also participates on the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Steering Committee, and Commissioner Herman on the Public Lands Steering Committee. The National Association of Counties Legislative Conference is coming up, and again, our next year Annual NACO Conference coming up in Fallon, hosted by Churchill County. And before I wrap up, I wanted to give just a brief plug and provide a little information regarding the U.S. Census. I know that Washoe County is participating in a local complete count committee, so you all know how important that is, and I just wanted to share a few things, including about some additional resources. You all know the reasons why this is so important in terms of getting federal dollars and for your representation at the state and in Congress. The governor has a state-level complete count committee. I'm your representative on that committee. They just approved funds and grants that are available for counties, so if you want any additional information on that or on the state level, please let me know. Thank you so much for the time today. This is our office in Carson City. Stop by anytime, and that's our contact information. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Miss Stapleton at this time, or Commissioner Jung?
Hi, thank you. Sorry, Mr. -- thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, Ms. Stapleton, I wasn't telling you to hurry up. I was saying, say more about the census and why it's so very -- sorry, I know, because you went like this, and then you're like, "I'm done." But this is so --
I have more if you'd like.
Americans, especially in the West, and then when you go further to sort of the libertarian state that we live in, are often very reticent to give information to census. And this has been a big hurdle even the last 10 years ago when we did this, to get people to answer the door. This has nothing to do with your citizenship status. Nobody cares. It was actually constitutionally determined that you can't ask that, because the bottom line for census is federal dollars. So every single one of you that say, "Oh, I'm not talking to them. It's other GD business, how many kids I have living in this house," you are losing us money every time that you do that. And I know it's counter to what -- much of what you've said, and listen, I used to make fun of my dad, who I say wears a tinfoil hat, until Edward Snowden came out. So I get it. There are conspiracies that are not conspiracies anymore, right? But I am telling you, when it comes to this level, we need to be counted. Don't overstate it, don't understate it, and nobody's coming after you for this. If they come after you, come to me. I'll personally lay my house on the line for you. Because really, Ms. Stapleton, can you say approximately how much per person that -- I'm sorry if I put you on the spot, because I don't know either, so make it up. Nobody would know. But if you could just say, on average, because I know there's some states that will spend no money to go out and get the count, and then you have our state to the west that's spending billions to get the count. What is the per-person money?
So I'm glad you asked that, and I did have that, and I'm sorry I rushed through it before. It's about $2,000 per person in Nevada of federal money that comes back. So for every person that is not counted in Nevada, Nevada, and that includes Washoe County, as well as the state collectively misses out on $2,000 of money that we pay in taxes to the federal government.
That's right.
So that, as well as -- I have a couple other --
Do it.
Okay. In 2010, Utah believes that they lost a delegate in Congress. They lost a seat in Congress because they were undercounted, and had they had some of their low, hard-to-count areas been fully counted, they would have had another representative in Congress. Nevada could potentially have another representative in Congress this year, depending on our count, so it's possible for us to. And then in terms of representation, it's what the legislature uses to determine for redistricting. Also, it factors into C-Tax and the distribution for your C-Tax, so it's hugely important at the county level, but also for citizens. And a couple more things. It's actually, in terms of the confidentiality, your census information that you give, it's actually a federal crime to share that information or to not keep that information confidential. And another thing, Commissioner Jung, just to address your concern about, who's this guy coming to my door? Can we trust them? There's actually, on the census website, there's a hotline you can call that if someone comes to your door, you can pick up the phone, take their name, and verify that this person is a federal employee and is there to take your census information. So you can verify that in order to keep it safe. And the only other thing that I would say is how important it is at the county level to support the outreach efforts into your community. There are funds available, small grants available, through the governor's office to do that. There are state staff on the ground. They just staffed up a couple weeks ago. There's federal staff on the ground, so there's all sorts of support for you guys to do that outreach, have events, put flyers. And finally, there are a handful of very hard-to-count census tracts in Washoe County. So those are census tracts where, based on response from the last census and demographic information, the census is saying they anticipate we'll have a low turnout for the count. So where people, they think, are not going to be filling out their census forms. So based on that, it's especially important to all do what we can in Washoe County to educate folks on the importance of answering the door, filling out the form, and participating in the census.
Thank you. And I want to also say, this is not free money. This is money you already paid to the government. So if you want to give it to California, I'm going to cheer you on. You give it to California. Otherwise, let's bring it back to right here at Washoe County. You already paid these taxes, people. This is your federal income tax that goes to the feds. Now they just want to know where you're at and how we can remunerate, and you've paid more than that, and I get that, too. I agree. I think you all should get six figures back, but that's not ever going to happen. So what I do want to put on the record is, if you need any help, you're on the governor's panel, please let me know, because I bet some of those tracts are in my district, because it's a very transient area. I'm happy to go knock doors, and I don't need to be paid. And I want to put that out to the rest of the people that are listening. These are decent, paid, part-time jobs for you. If you -- if you're nosy like me and you love to knock doors and get up close and personal and see how people live, that's why I love knocking doors, sign up. It's a good job. You can work it at your own, pretty much, your leisure. It's flexible. Then you can also say you're a federal employee. So please, please, please respond, and we also need volunteers to help. And you're not a real volunteer, because you get paid. I don't think volunteers should be called volunteers if they're get paid. So I can't say that enough. Commissioners, please go out and speak to your people, to any of your reluctant people, and if you give them my cellphone number, if they're even more reluctant. Because if I could convince my brother and my dad to do it, the tinfoil hat guys, I pretty much could convince anybody at this point. So because of the sheer -- the biggest resignation for them was, this is your money you already paid in. You don't want it back? So please, put my name out there. I'll happy -- I'll go escort. I don't want to be paid to do it, but I'll go help people and identify. I know where my peeps live, so, okay. Thank you.
Will do.
Director Stapleton, I want to thank you for the presentation and to dovetail off Commissioner Jung's. It is so important for the census and the census that, you know, counties often are labeled that we're responsible for indigent people, indigent persons here in the county, and a lot of that money comes from federal funding, from HUD, from DHS. We have a number of ways that we get that funding and we can apply for grants, and it's all based upon the numbers that are secured during the census. And some numbers that I want people to understand, here in the state of Nevada, Clark County grew by 12%. Their registration at the DMV grew by 12% over the last year. That's 250,000, approximately 250,000 people that moved into Clark County. In Washoe County, that number grew by 90,000 people, from what we've seen, 90,000 new people here in Washoe County in the northern part of the region. They're all coming from different parts of the state, whether it come from economic development, whether it's just relocation, whatever the reasons may be. Those are new people to our region that are looking for, they're either seniors, as Commissioner Jung has pointed out a number of times before, people moving to the region for senior services. Department of Transportation looks at those numbers. They look at the type of vehicle they -- I mean, average number of vehicles traveled, the ADTs on our roads. When we look at grants and we apply for grant funding and build grants and different things like that through the federal government, they look at those numbers. They are very, very important to us as we go -- as we diligently go, all of our departments, whether it's public lands, whether it's indigent services, whether it's human services, whether it's transportation, we have to go to those departments, and they rely heavily on that 10-year count. And it is tremendously important for everybody to participate in the census, help if you can in the census, and it makes a huge difference. And it also makes a difference in your representation, right here, on every level, local, state, and federal, how that is -- how does that is discussed in going years, for a 10-year period. So, you know, not something to take lightly. It's not just a tireless form. It is something that very much means dollars in your pocket that we are able to provide services with. So I want to thank you for your time and continued commitment and advocacy. Vincent, thank you for your -- you also both work tireless hours at NACO and do a lot of work for all the counties, rural and urban counties alike, and I want to thank you for your time and the presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item two -- or item four, I'm sorry.
Item four. Mr. Chair, item four is the Washoe County Recognition Committee's Shining Star Recognition Awards. I have a short list here, I'm told, of employees that are -- that may be in the audience, so if I can call your name, if you could stand, remain standing to be recognized. Ingrid Orvitz, Eric Lamoon, Roger Pelham, Michael White, Jennifer Noble, and Corey Sobrio. These are your Shining Star Award recipients. Thank you for all you do and for being here today and following this agenda item. Susie, raise your hand. We'll meet you out back with the -- outside with the actual awards themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And for all the other names or the individuals that couldn't be with us today, we want to thank you as well and congratulate you on your Shining Star Awards that you get from the managers and all the offices that you work for. So thank you for that, for your continued service here at the county. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item five.
Mr. Chair, before you go on, I did receive an email correspondence on agenda item number four from Ann Marie Grant, which I will place on the record.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. First up is Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Ms. Tammy Holdstall.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, one of the King's Conduits. What I wanted to talk to you guys about today was money, power, and influence. I think all of us have an issue with trying to stay within the budget, right? I spoke to a gentleman yesterday in New Jersey, and it was a business transaction, but we got off on a personal basis, and it talked about money. Money being -- everybody's just so tight, right, with the money, and we're all afraid to let money rule our lives. And I reminded him, I said, "Money is not evil in and of itself." I said, "The love of money is the root of all kinds of evil, but in and of itself, it's not evil." But then I happened to watch something yesterday about, you guys have ever heard of Judge Tracy Hunter in Ohio? She was convicted of using her influence as a judge to get her brother a job at a probation center. And so this trial went on for five years. Well, I caught this clip where Judge, his name was Patrick Dinglehacker, Lecker, sorry, Dinklehacker, was reading the 2.4 Code of Conduct for Ohio judges. There is a list of things that judges are not supposed to participate in, and if they do, they're breaking the law. So what I thought was, well, one of the things he said, that a judge is not even supposed to have the impression of allowing a person or organization to influence his decision. And I went, "Oh, my gosh, that's Judge Chris Wilson here in Sparks." Did you know that when Christopher Daher walked into the room, because I opened up a file, a claim against Excel Christian School, that the judge immediately went, "Hi, gosh, good to see you." You know, that Jason Guanasso and Christopher Daher, so good to see them. Well, during the case, I realized that these people were not telling the truth, right? And I kind of brought that up under oath, and the judge still found in the favor of Christopher Daher and Jason Guanasso. Well, I was suffering from what I still contend with, which is, you know, unnecessary chemo for a brain tumor that actually was healed by the laying on of a hand, so I didn't have much of a brain at that time. It's coming back. But anyway, so I got to thinking, well, what could I have done about that? Come to find out, you can do an appeals, but you have to do it within a certain length of time. So if you don't know about appeals, you don't make an appeal, and you let them get away with stuff. Fortunately, we live in a state that will allow action to be taken after the fact by a complaint form. So that will be taken up. There will be a complaint form issued. But all I will say is that the judges are not supposed to let personal things influence them. They're not supposed to let family influence them. They're not supposed to let public clamor or criticism influence them. And I would say that a lot of citizens, it's time for us to stand up and say, what was done in this court of law was not right. It was not ethical. It was not fair. And then maybe we can make some changes. Thanks, you guys.
Ms. Tammy Holdstall, followed by Mr. Joe Ariscotta.
Welcome, Ms. Holdstall.
Morning again, Tammy Holdstall, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. I'm going to start off with a couple of words that have been thrown around by county commissioners in the past: disingenuous and transparent. Those two words have not been used correctly by this county. That is, that the disingenuous propaganda that is put out on your Washoe County website regarding Swan Lake, that Mother Nature is the only thing that caused the flooding of Swan Lake. Well, I'd like to ask a simple question. Does it rain just on Swan Lake? Or is it runoff, stormwater runoff from development to Swan Lake? And let's not forget that both sewer plants during the wintertime are putting in their full amount of processed effluent. So how can it only be Mother Nature causing this issue? That is disingenuous, and it is not transparent, leaving out facts. Leaving out facts is disingenuous and is lying. Put the whole truth out there, not just what you think is the truth or what you want everybody to believe is the truth. Washoe County is coming up on a new year. We have residents that are still not in their homes. They're senior citizens. They're veterans. And yet, they're three years not being in their home. And it was stated that Washoe County will not rest until every resident is back in their home and back in their lives. That didn't happen. They are not back in their homes. They are sitting there looking at their homes that they cannot live in, that they're paying taxes on. And I'd like to know how my taxes went up in my neighborhood, on my home, considering the issues of Swan Lake? That is really interesting. How can the value of my property go up when I haven't done anything to it, but yet the mess that I'm living in? Hesco barriers. The only reason Swan Lake is not flooding anybody is because of the Hesco barriers. Disingenuous. So, I think for a resolution for the new year, Washoe County and everyone you need to look at another way of doing business, because this can't keep going the way it is. And I'd like to thank the county commissioner for taking the time to come out, and I look forward to seeing him out again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holdstall.
Mr. Joe Ariscotta, followed by Mr. Joseph Pitkin.
Can we get staff to help?
Just grab the mic, phone down. That's okay.
You got it, okay? You're all right?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Perfect. Yeah, we're good.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Lucy. On Wednesdays at 1:00, I attend, per the invitation of Judge O'Neill, the Camarino Court.
Joe, can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, goodness, sorry. Joe Ariscotta, for the record. Per the invitation of Judge Sheldon O'Neill on Wednesdays, I attend the Camarino Court, the court-appointed military offender court, at the One South Sierra. When entering the courthouse, there's a wheelchair-accessible ramp, the only entrance for a person with a disability and/or a parent pushing a stroller or a person using a walker. To steal a quote from the staff members inside the courthouse, "That ramp has turned into a toilet." That is a significant potential public health issue on that ramp. I have not attended court for the past three weeks, primarily because of the human defecation and urine on that ramp. It's a perfect area for a person not just to slumber, but also to urinate, because it's a concrete, it's a concrete-walled ramp. Rather than all the ramps that are throughout the campus here on the, at the Ninth and Wells, the ramp at the courthouse is perfectly concrete. And there's three individuals that I see on a regular basis, though, that use that ramp to urinate and defecate, and they have it processed, where one will be at the top of the ramp, one will be at the bottom of the ramp. And while the man is talking to them, leaning over the railing, is urinating. I attend court at 1:00. The ramp is, if it doesn't look like a river at 1:00, it looks like a river at 4:00 when I leave. So, what I'm asking, I went to the courthouse, went to Judge O'Neill, went to the individuals there at the courthouse, they diverted me over to the Health Department, Health Department diverted me over to here, because you all can make something happen quicker and expedite this entire process, because it is a significant public health issue. I'm not going to be the recipient of hepatitis by pushing up a ramp because something gets on my hands. So, I hope I, I hope none of this falls onto deaf ears. I hope something truly gets done, because if any of you all walk that ramp, you will be disgusted not just by the stench, but by the amount of urine on that ramp. Thank you all.
Mr. Michael Joseph Pitkin, followed by Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome, Mr. Pitkin.
Overhead, please. My name is Michael Pitkin. According to the FBI Bureau of Justice Statistics, from 1985 to 2018, Nevada had over 150,000 arrests, 95,000 white males, 40,000 black males, processed under all other offenses, like blackmail, embezzlement, et cetera. At one time, Nevada statistically had not only one of the highest arrest records in the U.S., but in the world. I looked at year '21 of the state of Nevada executive budget online. I stopped counting after 400-plus million for Public Safety and Department of Corrections. The $10 million for tax credits per year for affordable housing does not start until year '21. I looked at the Nevada Legislative Year '19 Budget online. This is one example. If you look on their website, click on Budgets, on the left side, it lists every budget in Nevada. This one example is for Nevada. For Washoe County, budget year '20, 184 million for Public Safety. For city of Reno, year '20 budget, 134 million for Public Safety. There appears to be a financial budgeting bias or budget disparities set up for the good old boys system. There appears to be real disdain for anyone who is not of the appropriate status. Subversive mobbing and bullying does not count, especially if it's in the public interest. My question is, whose public interest? I have the right to privacy and the right to be left alone in my own home. With that, I already asked the state of Nevada for over $100 million in job works programs for the inappropriate, undesirable homeless. It should be in every state. Here in Reno, there is no Job Corps or Job Connect, et cetera, on-site where the homeless are. I feel this is intentional. No one's rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness should be violated. I would have values also of pride, professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication to equality, fairness, service, and commitment to community. Also, if I was one on the receiving end of over 400-plus million, thank you.
Mr. Pitkin, if I can please get the items that you placed on the overhead. Next up is Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome.
Good morning. For the record, Catherine Snedeker, non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. If any of you took the time to have a look at your last refinancing bill that wasn't a refinancing bill, you would have seen that NRS 350 is about selling bonds, not refinancing, selling. That's what you did. You either sold the whole bond or a portion of it. And it was probably sold at a discount, and you had to put up collateral. You didn't follow any of the directions, that I can tell so far, about selling a bond. And you produced it to the public as refinancing, because, oh, we can skip all of the statutes that the legislature put out, because it's, it's to be treated as if it's an emergency that we do this. So, you ignore the statutes that are allowed, that are mandated for you to sell a bond. And I think that's racketeering, is what I think that is. I think that's a RICO action. You're getting money under false pretenses, telling the public it's good for us. On the census thing, I got a long form last time. I answered the one question I'm allowed, I'm required to answer, "How many people live in your house?" One. I had a census taker show up at my house. She was trespassing. You don't get to come and ask me other questions. You don't get to come onto my property and ask me why I didn't fill out the long form. It's none of your damn business. "How many people are in your house?" That's all you have to answer. Nothing else is required. In fact, the census isn't allowed to ask anything else, but they do. And I would like to say that I think you better get yourself some research on your own, because I know that somebody wrote you a letter saying, "Oh, no, everything was on the up and up." It's not on the up and up with that bond. You're cheating the people, you're lying to the people, and you're enriching yourselves, because the only taxpayer this helped was the taxpayer known as Washoe County. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's the last public speaker I had signed in, but I did want to put on the record that I received a second email from Ann Marie Grant this morning, and it will be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. So, you know, we have no further public comment. I'll bring it back to the board at this time. We are on to agenda item six. Mr. Manager.
Agenda item six, Commissioner and County Manager announcements, reports and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning?
I do have one item on the agenda, under the consent items, number 9B, needs to be pulled.
9B?
9B, as in brown.
Okay. So, we will make that adjustment, and we will pull that when we get to a consent this morning. Anything further, Mr. Manager?
No.
All right. Commissioners, I have Commissioner Young sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I don't think I should have to say this on the public record, but I'm going to. Can we get that ramp at the courthouse cleaned and all these other disgusting human wastes that we have throughout our community that is unacceptable? And, Mr. Manager, can we bring back to the board a cultural change in county employment, which is, whenever anybody fields a complaint, they should be a one-stop shop, not, "No, you need to go to the Board of Health," and the Board of Health says, "No, you need to go see the Board of County Commissioners." I mean, what a terrible way to treat somebody. And I think this whole organization could use a little customer service 101, which is, when somebody has a complaint to you, you don't shuffle them over to some other organization or agency. You chase it down and you get back to the complainant and fix it. That's the way, that's my theory as a commissioner. I'm a one-stop place, and staff knows better than to come to me and say, "Well, that's Reno." That doesn't help me or this constituent at all. So, I am really embarrassed about, if that is indeed the truth. Listen, I know there's three sides to every story, what he said, what she said, and what really happened. But I feel that slipping a lot, and especially when it comes to human excrement. I mean, I wouldn't have sent you anywhere. I probably would have got my own crew of friends and family to clean it up and put signs up. This is just terrible for a vulnerable human being who has to use what we've provided so that they can access their government, is then shuffled around and told other people need to clean it up. So, Mr. Manager, if we could get that and bring it back on the agenda and maybe talk a little bit more what our expectations are of every single Washoe County employee, whether they're at the courts, et cetera, because that, that is just completely unacceptable. As you may or may not see through the news, and I've asked not only our former manager, but our interim manager, when are we going to make a deal with NV Energy to stay on their power source? City of Reno got money, paid, just like Clark County, lots of money, to stay using NV Energy. So, that needs to be pursued ASAP. It really should have been pursued last year, and we saw what Clark County was able to achieve with that. That NV Energy will pay us to stay on their power and that we don't go off and create an off-grid situation. It's the biggest fear of all energy purveyors right now, especially if you can see what happened to the west of us with the PG&E responsible fires. Everybody wants off PG&E now, in all of California. I own property in California, so I have a bunch of next-door stuff that I get. Nobody wants to be with PG&E ever again, not only because of how much the rates are going to go up to pay the settlements of all the people that they killed, especially in Paradise, California, but they are going through those rolling blackouts as a way for PG&E to minimize their liability, but also ruining people's food, their pursuit of happiness in their own home. So, I think we need to go to NV Energy and start negotiating. I can promise you, our power bill is more than the city of Reno. And we want them to pay us to stay on their power, or we ourselves can create our own. We have a power station just right out here in Washoe County, unincorporated county. That is the reason why the TRIC was so, Tahoe Regional Industrial Center was so desirable because of the ability to create power. So, that needs to be done sooner rather than later. And then, I have something that maybe you have to bring back or, you know, get a vote on, but we need to, as a county, be communicating, and I was going to say this during the Truckee Meadows fire, but we were going over, we need to be communicating at a different level with a different audience because of, as the commissioner, as the chairman mentioned, of the new people who have arrived to Washoe County. I have had to help so many constituents with wayfinding here, because we don't have anything good that I can hand out and say, "Are you new to Washoe County? Here are all your resources." And I think the county should do that. We are the regional provider of services. And on those resources, for instance, Washoe County School District, guess what? I have nothing to do with it. We're just named stupidly, as the same names, right? But we need to be able to hand new people to our area, "These are your resources. This is how you navigate our area," in paper as well as a website. And it should be provided to all of 3-1-1, so that when they can query, "Are you new to this place?", send them an email with all of the information on how to access their local government, because it's hard here to figure out who's county, who's city, who's tomahawk, and then, see, we talk like this, too, who's Truckee Meadows Water Authority? And I think if we're going to have constituents engaged and happy to pay their de minimis tax bill that they pay here, we should be providing them the way to find, to reach all of the services that they have willingly or unwillingly decided they're going to pay into. And that is all I have. Thank you. And I want to wish everybody merry everything and happy Merry New Year as well, and thank the staff here, and thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm grateful for you, that we have a new manager here and a new start to this, and especially to the staff that take care of our wounded, oh, she's not here, our wounded and hurt animals, staff that takes care of wounded and hurt, cradle to grave, and the roadspeople who get the most calls during this, tis the season to make money in roads. But I know all of you do the best you can do to provide services to all citizens of Washoe County, and I am proud to call you colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Burke-Pigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like Commissioner Jung, I want to say I'm disgusted by the situation that Joe Ariscotta brought forward. And Mr. Ariscotta is an outstanding member of our community from a really top-notch family. So, this is not somebody who's going to come in and just, you know, say something that isn't accurate. And to think that people like Joe are being exposed to this kind of thing is just beyond my ability to comprehend. And I think it's important for us to first know who's responsible for keeping this clean, and then have them tell us why they're not keeping it clean. This is something that certainly we should not be having, having to have our citizens deal with when they're going to court. So, that just disgusts me. The other thing I want to say is, happy holidays to everybody. Thank you all so much. Staff who are listening, staff who are sitting here, thank you all so much for everything that you guys have done. It's been, I think, a tough year, but a very good year, and I really appreciate all of your support and everything that you've done for us all and for the county. And please, let's have a great holiday and looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple, Mr. Manager, I have a couple requests that I'd like to look into. Ms. Holdstall brought up during public comment, the homeless situation or transient situation on P-Vine, in the P-Vine area. This is a serious situation. We have seen it significantly in East Truckee River Canyon, you know, at the End of the World Camp that the sheriff refers to. We've talked about it, but this is a problem. And I'd like to have the sheriff come in and have a discussion with us about that. The other thing is that, to Commissioner Burke-Pigler and Commissioner Jung's point, when you have, we have bailiffs and staff and individuals working at One South Sierra, a significant amount of staff, DAs, people work there, there are county employees, if they're not walking, especially the bailiffs that are, you know, probably... they're not walking, especially the bailiffs that are, you know, probably doing the security for that, if they're not walking around and seeing these issues and at least reporting it to us, there should be some kind of channel that if they see it, they should report it to us immediately so that we can address it, at least have CSD or whatever's doing. But I agree with them. This is not something, when we have handicapped individuals that utilize those ramps and utilize, are challenged to get through our community centers because, not because there isn't a ramp available, but because there's feces, that's just where we fail. So that's something that needs to be addressed. And so, and then the one other thing that we're going to be talking about today later in the agenda is, it's in the consent agenda under the appointment of the new executive director for the Flood Board. But once again, and I'll point this out, and Commissioner Jung and I share the same sentiment about this all the time, is that we have too many siloed boards. You know, we have Flood that definitely deals with flooding just in Truckee River, but can't deal with flooding anywhere else. We have a Western Region Water Commission that, you know, was set up to sell Truckee Meadows, our interest in water to TMA, but no longer has, and so now is just kind of dealing with stormwater. Both of these boards get flood, I mean, funding to deal with those types of issues. In my opinion, I'd like to see some way, whether we talk about legislation, we work with these two boards, we work with the other entities, to combine these two, to start dealing with stormwater and flooding in the entire region, not just specifically for Truckee River or WRWC. It needs to be something that we can look for. So I would hopefully, in the next year, Mr. Manager, with your management and leadership, that we find a way to unify these two boards and consolidate what I look at as wasteful spending into two separate boards for two separate managements, to two separate minutes to do all these different things for public meetings that aren't directly helpful to the region and need to and could be utilizing funding. And, you know, at the Flood Board, there's a stranglehold there, because somehow through process, they made all of their votes unanimous. You can't get anything done unless it's a unanimous vote, which I think is a disservice to the entire community. I think that there should be contentious votes. We have them here all the time, we don't always agree. I think those are things that need to be changed so that we can move forward. But if we don't take the step to be a little bit more proactive and go out and have these conversations with the City Sparks and City of Reno to address these issues as it talks, as we talk about a regional situation, I think those are something that I'd like to see and work with you in the next couple of months to address and see what we can, going into legislative session in 2021, to address maybe some of those concerns. So those are my comments for today, and I also want to say happy holidays and share, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season with their families and loved ones and those around you. Please stay safe this holiday season. There's lots going on, but enjoy. And so that's all I have. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything this morning? Okay. All right, so with that, we will close Item 6, and we are on to Item 7. This is a proclamation, and Commissioner Burke Pigler is going to read this proclamation for this. This is 7A, this is to proclaim the month of January 2020 as National Radon Action Month.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, for the record, I've got some documentation from Cooperative Extension, little packets that I will distribute to the board and also place on the record for the meeting.
Awesome.
That wasn't very good. Yeah, good thing. Good morning, and I'm real excited to have you guys here from the Cooperative Extension to work on this. This is such an important project, just because we have a problem in our greater area with radon, so it's nice that the county is able to put this on every year for them. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas many Washoe County residents don't know about radon yet and need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally-occurring radioactive gas, that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second-leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates 21,000 people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Washoe County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four pico curries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas the University of Nevada Reno's Extension, Reno Extensions, Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public Behavioral Health, and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Washoe County residents to test their homes for radon and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Radon Action Month, and dated the 17th day of December, and signed by our Chair, Vaughn Hartung. And thank you very much for being here again, so good to see you, and please say a few words.
I've got a few words. Okay. Thank you. Do I have to say my name?
Yes, please.
Susan Howell, Nevada Radon Education Program. Thank you for this opportunity to present, for us to present information about radon and National Radon Action Month. This is the 10th year for a proclamation from you, and your support is appreciated. It's especially important for all that the proclamation stated, because testing is the only way to know if a home has a radon problem, and since January is National Radon Action Month, University of Nevada Reno Extension is again offering free radon test kits statewide from January 1st to February 29th. Kits cost $10 after that. Locally, residents can get a free radon test kit at our extension office, 4955 Energy Way, Sun Valley GID, or Incline Village Recreation Center. They partner with us all year. And residents can also get a kit at one of several radon presentations in January and February, Incline Village Public Works, Sparks Library, South Valley Library, Downtown Reno Library, and Northwest Reno Library. Testing is especially important in Washoe County, as you mentioned, where 22% of the homes tested had radon concentrations at or above the action level. The highest radon level in the state was found in Reno in 89509, and that still stands. It's 195 pico curries. The average radon level in the county is 3.3, which is more than twice the national indoor average. Verdi still has the highest potential in the county. Forty-seven percent of those homes have tested high, and their average radon level is 10 pico curries. Washoe Valley and Gerlock follow at 40%, and in Reno, zip codes 89501 and 89570 have high radon potential at over 40%, 47%. And other Reno zip codes that have high potential are 89505, 89509, 89510, 511, 512, 520, and 533. Every home can have a completely different radon level, so don't count on what your zip code says or what your neighbor's house said. And then 32% of the homes needing mitigation have mitigated their homes in this county. That's 713. And more than 1,800 homes have been tested in real estate. Another item is 120 homes were built radon-resistant in this county, and I'd love to talk to you at another time with further information about how homes can be built radon-resistant to keep radon out for $500 or less for a slab or basement home, and less than $1,000 for crawl space homes. Putting a price on the risk of lung cancer is what it's all about regarding building codes. And then every home needs tested, so please pass this information along to neighbors and friends and relatives, and for more information, you can always get it at 1-888-RADON10. That's our hotline, or go to our website, radonnv.com. We are also under Facebook and Twitter with Nevada Radon Program, and thank you again for this time giving this information.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, could we get you down for a picture, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let me give this to Nancy, but she already has it. Yeah. Go on.
We appreciate you coming today and participating and sharing that information with us. And I also want to put on the record, it is important, those radon tests are free, so as you can see, it is a very dangerous part of our community, so take advantage of that.
Mr. Chair, that was in the form of a motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burke Pigler, second from Commissioner Jung. Is there any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
I have no one signed in.
All right, seeing no one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're waiting just technically. There we go. Please affirm your votes. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we are on to Item 8, and as a custom, we were going to have Commissioner Jung read those for us. Commissioner Jung, will you take care of that for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to direct the public's attention to Item 8A through Item 8D Delta 2. Item 8A is a donation of $35,366, hard cash and in-kind donations of $91,946.66, and this is to the regional parks and open space programs. As you well know, Washoe County residents are very serious about their regional parks and open space, and they show it not only at their love and attention, but also in actual money that they'll give to us to operate. Item 8B Bravo, recommendation to acknowledge a donation of $5,000. The State Bar of Nevada gave that to our Washoe County Law Library, which is ran very well by the executive director, who's here in the crowd to make sure that we're going to let her take the $5,000. It's yours. And then Item 8C is we are retroactively accepting donations in the amount of $670. It's from a whole cabal of people who care deeply about what goes on in our community, and this was all used as raffles for the sheriff's office's Community Resource Fair that we had in October, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Item 8C2 is also to the sheriff's office. It's the Veterans Barracks, in the total amount of books of $1,873.75. I see that their lobbyist is here. I want to put in there, post 9211, of the veterans of foreign wars have offered many, many books and have not had response from the sheriff's office. This was offered at the Veterans Day breakfast in Sun Valley. I know the sheriff is very busy, but I was asked to bring that back to you. But they have a lot of books that they want their veterans that are in barracks in custody to have access to, and frankly, every inmate should have access to books. Item 8 Delta D, recommendation to acknowledge different items for a market value of $12,534 as well as hard cash to the Washoe County Human Services Agency. The hard cash is $5,046.40, and that's for child welfare activities. This, equally, as much as our constituents love animals in open space, they're crazy about children in our Human Services Agency, and we're lucky that they put that function at such a high priority, and that they show it in their donations and their cash. Item 8 Delta 2, D2, Washoe County Senior Centers received $863.95 of hard cash that will go directly to helping seniors, children, and all of the other vulnerable in our community who Washoe County is proud to take on the defense of them and through the great staff that we have in all of those different functions. So I thank you, Washoe County citizens. There's no way this county could do half of what we do if it wasn't for the investment of the average citizen, so thank you.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
Thank you. I have a Commissioner Jung, a motion from Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Burke Pigler. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
We do have one person signed in, Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I just wanted to say, since this is about money, I'll just be a little bit, not flippant, but I will say that when you were talking about NACO, nonprofit for emergencies, I'm going, well, I don't know what constitutes an emergency, but I do. I'd like to make myself a nonprofit, I'm telling you. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to say is that I'm grateful for the Washoe County Law Library. They have been essential in helping me work through some issues. I really like it. In fact, I'll just relate one quick story. I went in there one day to wait for the, you know, lawyer in the library, and I went over to one of their books, pulled out a California book, opened up the page, and there is an article right there about Richard Allan Davis. Yeah, it was ironic. That was the one that, you know, helped himself to a 12-year-old girl and did some terrible things to her. What I will say is that I really hope that we don't do what California does and override the death penalty for Richard Allan Davis, because I think that's the worst thing you can do to the family that had to be subjected to that. So I just want to say thank you for the Washoe County Library.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
That's all the public comment we had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, I have a, I do have a motion from Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Burke Pigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. All right, there we go. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 9, which is our consent agenda. As you pointed out earlier, we will be moving, we will be tabling 9B and removing that from the agenda for today, and that will come back at a later time in date. One other thing I would like to point out in the agenda is Item 9D2. The chairman cannot be here today, but he is, we are going to be approving a special fund disbursement for him, the amount of $2,500 from fiscal year 2019, 2020, and to the Friends of Washoe County Library to support the Spanish Springs Library and the creation of a community mapping station, complete with interactive topographic maps in Spanish Springs area, something very near and dear to the Commissioner's heart in regards to planning and that type of thing. So we want to thank Commissioner Hartung and the benefit that the Spanish Springs Library will see from that. So with that being said, is there any other things that any Commissioner would like to have discussion on in regards to the consent agenda this morning?
And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. For the record, I've got a new resolution on Item 9C, which I'll distribute to the Board.
You have a new resolution? Okay, thank you. Anything, any Commissioners would like to look at? I see nothing from the Commissioners at this time. I do have public comment signed in for Item, Ms. Elise Weatherly.
I was just going to make a little comment about 9B, the children's cabinet, but since it's been removed from the agenda, I'll wait till next time to make my public comment on that. The public comment would be that I have seen, I refused help from them recently. The reason being is I looked at the list of people that were serving on that board, and have you ever come to the conclusion that a person might be just serving on a board just to make a name for themselves? Just a question. Thank you.
All right, so looking for a motion. All right, so looking for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, real quickly, before you take that motion, the document that was just handed out to the board regarding, I think, nine C is being made available at the back of the room, I believe, for the public, if anybody wishes to view it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for the clarification. All right, so looking for a motion. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burke Pigler. I have a second. Commissioner Jung. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. All right. Mr. Manager moves us on to item ten.
No. Hello?
There you go.
Okay. Recommendation to accept funds from the Nevada Association of Counties, NACO, for the state of Nevada, provided that, from the Fund for Hospital Care to Indigent Persons for County Payments for the Medicaid Match Program for the Long-Term Care in the amount of $360,000 for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, FFNE costs related to the completion of the Our Place Project, retroactively from October 14, 2019, and direct the Controller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Human Services Agency has been involved.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any, is there a presentation needed or any discussion needed by the board on this item? Okay.
I just want to, may I just say something, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Nevada NACO, for recognizing how important this project is for our indigent citizens. I hate saying homeless, because people are so much more than without shelter, and that's what Washoe County does. We do wraparound services. We don't warehouse people. It's not our goal to do that. Our goal is to rehabilitate and get people paying taxes again, sorry. I mean, that's really what I care about, is the bottom line, but also the humanity. And I also want to recognize that this comes from our Director of the Human Services Agency. I understand this was competitive, and Ms. Amber Howell, again, hit it out of the park. She's the one that got us the NAMS campus in the first place, because Governor Sandoval loved her. And that's amazing, to have people love you, so we can get things done around here, as you know, in this tiny town. But I have to tell, NACO, I really appreciate that. And there are many times that I'll say, bottom line, me on everything. That's how I live my life. And how much do we give NACO, and what do we get back? Well, this is one thing that you better remind me of next time I say, how much do we pay in fees for this? Then you can say, Commissioner Jung, you got $360,000 that you never had and couldn't find, for the importance of making these places as home-like as we possibly can, for people that are in vulnerable positions and may have lost their way due to mental illness, substance abuse, or just life. And every single one of us could be there. It's projected that we are, the majority of Americans are two paychecks away from homelessness. So the more we can put ourself in that place, I think, the more humanely we treat each other. And I want to thank NACO for that and your activism, Commissioner Herman, and yours, Mr. Chairman. I know that Commissioner Lucy has made it his life's work. He's the new Pete Sforza, then the Bonnie Weber of NACO. They are going to be running NACO at one point and being nationally, you know, they love this, but it really, Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Hartung, Chairman Hartung and Vice Chairman Lucy, if they're not there at the table, Dagny wouldn't admit it, but she is shaking her head, if they're not there at the table fighting for this stuff and knowing what's out there, there's no way we could all keep our eyes and ears on this. And also, you know, Washoe County, Ms. Howell, while you write the best grants in the world, Washoe County also had the muscle to say, hello, who's the next president of, you know, NACO? And I know that all goes into it, and sometimes we forget to put all those pieces together, all the hard work and years of plugging at that. But I know that we can't do it without you as our partners as well, and we are fundamentally and genuinely so happy for anything we can get to do something that we really don't have the money for yet at this time, but we are in the belief, if we build it, they will come. And we also morally believe that we are responsible to take care of those that can't take care of themselves, whether it's four-legged or two-legged. So thank you, NACO, and thank you, Ms. Howell. And thank you, Commissioner Lucy, because I know you have stepped into this and have made this a national model for others. And I know he'll go back in February and brag all about how...
I think, yeah, you will.
Yes, you will. And brag about, really, this is a huge lift from a fabulous county commission that's all pulling in the same direction. So I'm proud to serve with you, and I'm proud that we have staff and affiliate agencies that help us achieve our goal, which is to really make sure that every human being in this community is treated with the dignity that comes with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any other comments? All right, I have a motion. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Jung. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Burke Pigler. Do we have any public comments signed in on this, Madam Clerk? All right, seen no public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, NACO. We appreciate your continued support. And thank you, Ms. Howell. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item eleven, which is a very, very important item that we are going to talk about.
Mr. Chair, item eleven is a recommendation to approve an increase in the construction budget in the amount of $2,735,000 for the Our Place Homeless Housing Project, increasing the project construction budget to $13,735,000, and direct the Controller's Office to make the necessary cross-funding and cross-functional appropriation transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, Mr. Smith, staff, do we need, I mean, Commissioner, would you like some comments or discussion on this?
Mr. Chair.
All right.
I don't need a presentation, but I do think it's important for us to put on the record that this great new name, Our Place Homeless Housing Project, used to be called the NAMS Project. And this is such a better name, because this is really a place where we're going to be able to help a lot of people who are down on their luck for whatever reason, or having family issues, and this campus is going to be fabulous. And I once again want to thank Ms. Howell for all that she's done and her team putting this together. I know it's not been easy, and I really appreciate all the work you're doing, and I'm so excited. I cannot wait until May, when we can go in and say, look, isn't this wonderful? So I totally support this donation, I mean, this increase.
You know, and I just want to add one last comment. Commissioner Burke Pigler, this is absolutely spot on. You know, without the continued efforts of CSD and HSA to put this together and continue to find ways to piecemeal and, you know, lace this thing together, this truly is a national model. And you know what? I'm going to say here, and I'm tired of hearing it from the other entities, we put in the money. We put in the money, we put in the dollars. It is hard cash, and it's going, this is another perfect example of $2.7 million that we're putting into homeless and indigent people and rehabilitation of individuals throughout our region that is now to, if you look at the total dollars spent that we do, is nearing $20 million. $20 million. That's significant, and I would challenge any other regional entity to step up and tell me that they've spent more than we do, that they've done more, that they have been involved more than what... I will take that on any day of the week. I will have that debate. I will talk to that individual and show them the dollars and cents that we have invested. And I have to thank Amber, Kim Schweiger, Duane, staff, Dave Solero, Kate Thomas, all the staff that has worked on this for the last couple of years to bring this to fruition and continue to make this a reality for those individuals. You are going to make a difference in this community, and it is going to be drastic. And I want to say, that is impressive, and I want to thank you for your time and effort. And I will continue to be your champion here, and I will continue to be your advocate, no matter where we go, what we say, and I'll stand up to anybody and challenge them to have that conversation with me. Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You just jogged another memory for me to say, you know, I think it's a really important, when you point out that this county is putting $2 million in, I mean, $20 million into homeless situations, but think what the cost would be to this county if we did nothing. And that, and it's not just the cost to all of the taxpayers, but it's the cost of, I mean, it's not just the county's putting this money in from all the taxpayers, but we're also getting donations from Grace Church and from another really wonderful groups that say, let's do what we can for the people who are indigent and in need of services. And I'm just so proud to be a part of this county and know that we are fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money by doing what we can to help these people. So thank you again for everything you've done.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Burke Pigler. You're absolutely right. All right, so do I have a motion from you, Madam? I do have a motion from Commissioner Burke Pigler, second from Commissioner Jung. Any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no one signed in.
All right, seen no public comment. Bring it back to the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item twelve.
Item twelve is a discussion and direction regarding APN 038-401-02, known as the Verdi Historic Schoolhouse and Verdi Volunteer Fire Property, located at 165 Bridge Street, consideration of an offer by the Verdi Historic Preservation Society, Inc., a Nevada nonprofit corporation, in the amount of $2, and if supported, authorize the chairman to execute the resolution of intent to convey and schedule a public hearing on January 14, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. to allow for any objections to this action. Community Services.
Great. Mr. Solero.
Good morning. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. Wanted to bring this item before the board. I've been working with the Verdi Historic Preservation Society for a few years now, trying to determine the best end result for the historic schoolhouse in Verdi, which is located on Bridge Street. We have been going back and forth, trying to determine what the best use for that property is. Washoe County originally purchased this property in 1964 from the Washoe County School District for a cost of roughly $4,000 to utilize the facility as a community center. And so it has been housed within our park operations for many years. Just prior to the economic downturn, we had a project to do some structural rehabilitation and clean the building up a little bit. It does have some structural work that needs to be done. The Verdi Historic Preservation Society actually has funding to be able to do some of that work, and they would like to take this building on and create a community center, again, a thriving community center for the community of Verdi. We do have a fire apparatus bay on this property as well, and so I've also worked with the Treccameno Fire Protection District and the Verdi Historic Preservation Society to create a no-cost lease for the continued use of that portion of the property for fire services in Verdi, as long as the fire chief will need those. And so if you do the resolution today and we bring this back with a deed to convey this property, then at the next fire meeting, the middle meeting in January, we will bring that lease to the Board of Trustees for the fire district. So if there are any questions associated with this property, I'm certainly ready to answer those.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Solero? Commissioner Jung.
Thank you. I just want to say that I would like staff to pursue more of these, if possible, because I know you want them off your assets and liabilities balance sheet. But most importantly, when it goes to historic preservation, as you can see what's happening in Verdi, I mean, Verdi is not going to look the same in maybe five years. And it's important that we maintain a connection to our history and that people see the historic value of this and that it's a public place and won't be bought out by all the multimillionaires from California and changed into any street, any town USA. So I'd like to see more of this, to preserve the classic feel as well as the access to community-owned property. So I think it's a great idea. I think it makes sense for our books and balancing our books and really getting out of the business, Mr. Solero, of rehabbing buildings that you know we have no money to maintain or to staff. So in that, I really support this, but I'm not making the motion, because I'm going to respect that it's in a different Commissioner's district.
Commissioner Herman?
Motion.
Okay, great.
So, let's see, where is it on here? Can I just say that I would make the motion to, okay, I move to approve a settlement of, no, this isn't the right one. I'm sorry. I don't have the right one. Because I just put it somewhere else. Thank you. Okay. Should the board agree with staff's recommendations? Okay, the motion should be moved to execute the resolution of intent to convey property and schedule a public hearing on January 14, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. to allow for any objections to this action.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Herman. I have a motion from Commissioner Herman. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Jung. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I have no one signed in.
All right, thank you. Seen no public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. All right, so at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we are on to item thirteen, but prior to opening item thirteen, we do need to recess briefly for an attorney-client session with our district attorney. So we will be at recess. Mr. Edwards, would noon be an acceptable time to return?
I would say 12:15.
12:15, okay. So we will be in recess until 12:15. We will return to complete the meeting at this time. Thank you.
All right, waiting for our district attorney. As soon as we get our district attorney down here, we'll get Jack back into this, reconvene. All right, as our, I'm going to reconvene the main, bring us back from recess. Thank you for being patient with us. I know we ran a little bit longer than intended, but we are back in session now and on to the final substantive agenda item for the day. Mr. Manager, will you please take us in and open item 13, please?
Sure. Item 13 is a discussion and possible approval of a settlement of Lakes at Lemon Valley LLC versus Washoe County, Second Judicial District Court, case number CV-18-02374, and associated Nevada Supreme Court, case numbers 79469 and 79788. A judicial review case in which the board denied a 98 for single fam, a 98 lot for single-family residential subdivision along the eastern edge of Lemon Drive, just south of the intersection with Military Road. That's APN-552-210-18. The settlement agreement follows a settlement conference at the Supreme Court on November 13, 2019, and is subject to approval by a majority of the board. Settlement terms include the following: authorize the withdrawal and dismissal of the county's appeal. Effective upon remittitur, that's a tough one, from the Nevada Supreme Court, approve the subdivision pursuant to the district court's July 2019 order, overturning the board's denial of the tentative map. Prohibit any units from being sold without the sub, within the subdivision before December 1, 2021. Pursue a median device proposal by the developer's engineer to the Regional Transportation Commission that would allow a left-hand turn out of the subdivision. If the median device is okayed by RTC, require the developer to construct it. Require the developer to waive all claims for damages arising out of or related to the subject matter of the litigation, including but not limited to any claim or damage based on the alleged loss of an approximately $2 million sale due to the litigation. Require the parties to bear their own costs and attorney's fees. Provide other matters pertinent to the resolution of the case and authorize the chair to sign a settlement agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. District Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Edwards, is there anything you'd like to add in regards to this discussion?
No, not at this time. The agenda item lays out the framework of the proposal. This, as you know, grew out of a settlement conference in the Supreme Court, which the case was assigned to by the Supreme Court under Settlement Judge David Wassick back in November. And this is the framework of the proposal that came from that process. It is subject to your approval or denial here today. And you're free to make a decision based on your deliberations and any public input that you received today.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Just a point of clarification in regards to this. Commissioner Herman and myself did attend a settlement conference at the Nevada Supreme Court in regards to this matter, and these discussions were had between the county, as are your representatives, Commissioner Herman and I, and also the developer on the other side with the settlement judge. These are some of the terms that were brought about, but this is effectively a decision based on the, by the board and all members of the board. So with that, are there any discussion or any questions that would be like to be put on the public record by any of the commissioners? I'm seeing none, so what I'm going to do is open public comment at this time and take public comment. Madam Clerk, will you call public comment for us, please?
First up is Ms. Tammy Holdstil, followed by Mr. Joe Reinhardt. Tammy Holdstil, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. I think you are getting the cart before the horse. You want to approve something, but you haven't gotten approval from RTC yet. Okay? For a left-hand turn, which is immediately following a stoplight that is already there and a large emergence of traffic from Military Road. I've sat in that traffic coming here one day, where I was stopped for five minutes at the light at Military Road. The light was green and I couldn't go anywhere. There was a house burning. There would be no way to get anybody there because of the situation in the North Valley. Then you top it off with, you do not have sewer capacity. You do not have any place for stormwater runoff. None of those issues have been addressed and fixed to approve another 98 single-family dwellings. Is Mr. Booth doing anything to help the situation in Lemon Valley? No, he's looking at his bottom dollar in his pocket. It is your responsibility to be taking care of the citizens. Public safety is number one, and there's many aspects to that. There's fire, police, traffic, sewer, stormwater. I have been in front of you now for three years, and nothing is done except for HESCO barriers. I have been in front of you now for three years, and nothing is done except for HESCO barriers. You know, you sit there and you talk about, "Well, we're not putting in that much effluent." During the wintertime, you are putting in your max. Everything you process goes into that lake. It doesn't evaporate. Nothing evaporates in the wintertime. When it rains, it doesn't rain just on Swan Lake. It rains all over the valley, and it feeds down into Swan Lake. Let's start using some common sense. Sorry. Staff sits there and says, "It's Mother Nature." Well, Mother Nature just doesn't happen in one little spot. Nothing has been done. Why are you going to do this? Why are you going to put -- oh, this is the other thing real quick, is you go ahead and tell this person that they can do this? You are setting yourself up that every resident can do whatever they want to their property. You want to set that precedence? Because that's what you're doing. I'm going to throw an attorney at you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtstall.
Mr. Joe Reinhardt.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Joe Reinhardt, co-owner of Silver State Kennel at 600 Lemon Drive, and now co-owner of 400 Lemon Drive, both of which border the south side of this applicant's proposed project. Our kennel has been a permitted business since the '70s and under our management since 1989. We have adhered to the conditions of our special use permit, to the point of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to construct indoor-outdoor kennel buildings to cut down on the noise. The construction of this project will have a direct impact on our business if occupants of the adjacent homes complain about our operation. In the Planning Commission staff report presented May 1, 2019, conditions of approval associated with these potential issues were presented, and as far as I know, were agreed to. These include construction of an earthen berm with sound attenuating wall along the southern property line of the subject property, evergreen planting in the common area of the south end of the proposed subdivision along the length of the wall. Construction activities shall be limited to specific daytime hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays, which is also kind of congruent with what we do with our dogs and the time limitations we have. Inclusion of sound attenuating windows, wall materials, and construction techniques on these properties adjacent to the kennel. And most importantly, full disclosure to all homeowners, homebuyers adjacent to the kennel that the kennel is a permitted use in operation since the '70s, and that the noise from the dogs is understood and accepted by the homebuyers, and notes stating so shall be included on final maps. And these disclosure notes shall be included in all title documents and shall be included in all subsequent sales of all lots in the subdivision. I would like assurance that these conditions carry forward if you choose to approve this project. In addition, I really encourage you to strongly evaluate the traffic issues in this area and ensure that you are making the right decisions regarding traffic safety mitigations imposed on the project. It may not be enough. For example, just in the last three weeks, in front of my properties, we've had five accidents, one of them causing property damage to the kennel exterior fence. Ever since the pot shop and all that has been built, the traffic there is unbelievable, and the people making U-turns and doing stupid things continues and continues. We're going to end up killing somebody. And now we're going to add this left turn lane on top of it. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
That's all the public comment we had signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll bring it back to the board at this time. Are there any discussions from any other commissioners? I have a couple comments. To address some of the public comment, I do want to assure that the conditions that were set forth by the planning commission in regards to this will stand as we go forward. Is that correct, Mr. Edwards?
Yes. The conditions that were part of the project as it moved through would be part of the approval. So the judge's order was not that this be approved with no conditions. It was with the conditions.
Okay. Thank you for putting that on the record. Secondly, this process was, by a majority of the board, was passed and to move forward with an appeal of this and not allow this presentation because of the traffic conditions, because of a number of things. And as is written in the staff report, I would like to assure you that obviously this is a condition, but one of the conditions of the settlement is that it does require that the Regional Transportation Commission consider the proposal and then also vote on that and then make the adjustments based upon that. Now, that is at the Regional Transportation Commission because that road is a regional road, and it is a challenge. We understand traffic is a challenge out there. It's one of the conditions that Commissioner Hartung, myself, even Commissioner Jung had issues with this. However, this is a regional road, and we're kind of subject to what they decide to be allowed out there. This is one of those challenges that we sit here at the county commission and we have to deal with. But unfortunately, this is where we're at with this process, and this is in Commissioner Herman's district. We've tried to adhere to her wishes and some of the challenges that we see in Lemon Valley. I understand those issues that rely within this property. But today, we are kind of forced to make a decision based upon where we are with the settlement case. So Commissioner Burke Pigler? I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to point out that this commission actually voted to oppose this, and the judge is the one who overthrew our decision. So we are left with a situation where we have a judge doing planning, and now we're litigation, and so what are we going to do? And that's kind of why we're in the boat we're in today, to try and resolve a decision that was made by a judge who frankly has no planning experience at all.
So thank you, Commissioner Burke Pigler. Absolutely. I have no other commissioners sign in. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. Seeing no further discussion on this, at this time, I'm looking for a motion based upon the staff report and what has been presented here today in regards to the settlement between Lakes of Lemon Valley LLC and Washoe County. No motions?
What does it say here?
We're being recommended by staff and our district attorney to accept the terms of the negotiated settlement, so I will make the following motion. I move to approve a settlement of Lakes at Lemon Valley LLC versus Washoe County, Second Judicial Court, case number CV-18-02374, and Associated Nevada Supreme Court, cases numbers 79469 and 79788. A judicial review case in which this board denied a 98 lot single-family residential subdivision along the eastern edge of Lemon Valley, just south of the intersection with Military Road, APN 552-210-18. The settlement agreement follows a settlement conference at the Supreme Court and includes the terms that were read earlier by our county manager and affirmed by our district attorney.
I will second that motion, and I would also like the record to reflect what the gentleman with his own business next to these houses, that there is part of their covenants that don't get to complain about an existing, what some would call nuisance, a noise nuisance, not me, but a noise nuisance as well. That needs to be as part of that so that future commissions aren't dealing on the tax dollars dime when people inevitably complain that it's not the perfect Schengen law that they thought they were buying.
Okay, great.
And I want to thank our district attorney, Nate, and Commissioner Herman and the vice chairman for being down at the state wrangling with this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right, so we've got a motion from Commissioner Burke Pigler, second from Commissioner Jung. Any further discussion? Is there any public comment?
We already had public comment.
Sorry, thank you for reminding me. No further public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries three to one, with Commissioner Herman being in the opposition. All right, the motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. So we're on to, Mr. Manager, we're on to item 14.
Item 14 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
Mr. Michael Joseph Pitkin, followed by Ms. Tammy Holtstall.
My name is Michael Pitkin. During this season of giving, I humbly ask for a couple of things. First, it's hard to give if you can't even get to work. I talked with Zoo Lily. They told me they needed workers. Many of their applicants do not have transportation. At one time, Zoo Lily had shuttle service but stopped due to non-use. This unreliable transportation is not good for business. I feel there should be a fixed RTC bus route from Reno and Sparks for servicing all businesses at Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center. RTC informed me of the contracted shuttle service provider, My Ride to Work. My Ride to Work informed me they provide services for Tesla, Panasonic, Jet, and Radial only. I believe a regular fixed RTC bus route or a beefed-up My Ride to Work with bicycle capability is crucial for continued growth. One thing I learned about the Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center is they need a better criminal record, inmate history, past convictions, and law violations policy. This is the one group who needs to be employed the most, and they are being penalized. Reno is a city with a large inmate history population. All Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center businesses should have the ability to employ individuals with past criminal history records. My second humble request. I understand the movement of the universal right to female hygiene products. I also believe there is a male equivalent of importance, and that is of shaving. My hormones cause me to have to shave every day. If I do not shave every day, I am stigmatized a bum and/or homeless. This is not a once-a-month concern, but rather an everyday concern, and I even have to shave my head. In the past four years, when I regularly go to Salvation Army, Good Shepherd's Clothes Closet, St. Vincent's, and others, they're always out of razors. I know individuals can ask for help from Washoe County for certain causes, and so may I ask my representative, Kitty Jung, find a way, whether a one-time or an ongoing way, to help supply all the charities in the area not only with female hygiene products but razors as well. And if there are a few extra dollars, not deodorant, but antiperspirant is crucial, and I thank you, and everyone have a blessed year.
Ms. Tammy Holtstall?
Tammy Holtstall, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. I'd like to let everybody that's listening, and hopefully the residents will hear me, that you have just set a precedent that if we throw money at an attorney and we file in court, that we fight enough, you fold. Maybe we just haven't fought you enough. Because he turned around, got an attorney, and he fought you, and you folded. It doesn't matter that the lake is flooded. It doesn't matter you don't have sewer facilities. It doesn't matter there's a traffic issue. You just fold. So you're sitting there telling every private citizen that if we throw enough money at an attorney and we fight it, we're going to get what we want. That man has violated your codes, and you didn't do much to him but make him repair what he had done damage to. He's going to build all these homes, but he's going to affect a business out there because you know doggone well that with barking dogs, and they're a great kennel because I take my Husky there, they're going to have issues, and we're going to lose a great business out there. You have not done your jobs as a county in planning. By the cluster you-know-what that we have, it's obvious. The flooding we have, it's obvious. And I don't understand why you can just sit there and look at me and think this is okay. Because that's what it looks like. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I hope you decide to really get off your duffs and do something different.
That's all the public comment we had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. All right, I see no further public comment. We will move on to item 15. This is our final. Commissioners and county managers, Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. Commissioners, anything from anybody? All right, seeing nothing, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.